Fine, that's true. Okay.
I was thinking about it, actually, I really was. We go for it, but... Not something new.
Welcome everyone to the Township Council meeting, Monday, February 25, 2019. Please rise, Mr. Simone Lees and pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the Statement of public notice.
The notice that adequate notice that this meeting is provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. The notice that the meeting was confidently posted on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building located in 225 Green Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 2, 2019. A copy of notice was mailed to the American North Jersey Harlem News and Journal on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Coordinator, present. Councilmember Forum, present. Councilmember Receiver, present. Councilmember Chair, present. Council President, scott.
Present. Have a motion, a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Coordinator, yes. Councilmember Coati, yes. Councilmember Receiver, yes. Councilmember Chair, yes. Council President, scott.
Yes. Councilman Coati?
Thank you, Council President. Happy to announce that the Little Falls Green Fair for March 30th is coming along nicely. We have several organizations and businesses committed to a debt, and we feel like it's going to be a great event. We're hoping that everybody can come out and get educated on sustainability and how different organizations can help impact the environment in a positive way. Additionally, the domestic violence committee will be having a meeting on Tuesday or fifth in this building at 7:00 PM.
Councilman Ben Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. A couple items to go through real quick. We reached out today to all our committee members regarding the Memorial Day Parade. We're looking forward to pulling that together this year, again, working with the American Legion, of course, all the local organizations as well as businesses. So we're going to start meeting next month to start planning the event for May. The other thing, too, I did last week was I met with the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, as I mentioned last meeting, about going beyond the Earth Day planned cleanup and setting up two more additional days throughout the rest of the year where we can get residents, different organizations in town, and community leaders coming together to help, you know, clean up some of the streets around town. Got some good feedback from the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. And my next step is to start meeting with some folks within this council, as well as Mr. Simone, Dan Duso, and some others, so we can start with a mapping out of a nice plan once we get through Earth Day in April. The last item I want to touch on briefly, but I'm also going to defer over to Mayor Damiello on this. You know, from a transportation standpoint, we had a resident come through a couple weeks back talking about some concerns around Long Hill and with two to three streets having stop sign. You know, we did do some due diligence on our end, and I want to defer to the mayor based on the updates from him, as well as Chief Post.
Mayor, you want to take those updates now?
Sure. Thanks, Council President. So we had, as Councilmen said, some concerns regarding the intersection of Long Hill Road and Bridgewater. We reviewed some traffic accidents from that intersection, and apparently there's only been five accidents over the past 10 years in that intersection, which does not rise to what is a dangerous intersection whatsoever there. In fact, there is relatively low number of accidents within the intersection, especially whether the volume of traffic and cars that travel through there on a daily basis. That said, our traffic, officers did spend a substantial amount of time there monitoring and reviewing the vehicle flow there. I think more than anything, and this is my own observation, spending some time there, that vehicles, as they approach the intersection, if they are unfamiliar with it, tend to be more cautious than anything as they approach the intersection, if they're not familiar, which, again, my own perception of it is, you know, there's no good, that's the information. That's all.
Councilwoman Coordinator?
Yes, I had an initial meeting with Mr. Hayes, the Director of the Rec Center, to talk about the expansion of the Little Falls Road Park and to start looking at that. And we will, with some members of the Open Space Committee, do a tour of some of the parks that have been upgraded in Essex County with some of the new interactive playground apparatus, as well as special needs apparatus. So really looking forward to that and starting to work on plans for the expansion.
Councilwoman Receiver?
Thank you. So we had a meeting recently with Municipal Alliance, who has some updates. We are in the process of scheduling a date for senior citizens to utilize a Dropbox for unused or expired drugs. We will be setting that up probably near the Recreation Center or Pacific Center, so more to come on that. We're also going to be hosting the 5th and 6th grade dance at the Little Falls Recreation Center on May 3rd. This, the Alliance also holds a question and answer session for the children regarding drug and alcohol and smoking awareness. Those who answer correctly also receive a small gift from the DJ, so it makes it a little more fun for them. The Alliance is also sponsoring the program. This program has been ongoing and was implemented by the Little Falls Police Department. The program's been very well received and is intended to continue to educate our children and our school systems on the effects of drug and alcohol. And then, we're also proud to announce that we are going to be providing funding for the Little Falls Junior Police Academy again this year. And then, lastly, we're also going to be purchasing a drug identification awareness board. This will give explanations so children and parents and adults can understand what different things look like, so they are aware and they see it elsewhere. So the education display will be utilized during any of our events that we host. And then, we're open to release it during National Night Out in August.
Thank you, Council, for those detailed reports. Mayor James Belford Damiello?
Yes, Council President, the first thing this evening is I would like to appoint Councilwoman and Councilman Receiver to the Little Falls Library Board, as my president, with the advice and consent of the Council. This is in place of you, Council President, being prior to this meeting, as an alternate of the library. And I know you have many other tasks that you are undertaking, and we ask that the Council and Receiver will graciously accept it, be appointed to their position.
Mayor, we appreciate that. I am grateful that, although I've missed the library, that, yes, there are other issues coming up that I'll be involved with, so I appreciate the Councilman stepping up. Can I have a motion to accept that appointment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those, I'm sorry, call the roll, Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Coordinator, yes. Councilmember Coati, yes. Councilmember Receiver, yes. Councilmember Chair, yes. Council President, scott.
Yes. Don't disappoint us, Councilwoman Receiver, because I'm going to miss that post. Mayor James Belford Damiello, the budget, what we've been waiting for?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This evening, I'm going to be giving my brief, shorter presentation of 2019 Municipal Budget for Township in Little Falls. And there will be a lengthier presentation on March 11th, we'll give a lengthier presentation. So as a brief summary of the 2019 current fund budget, current appropriations are $9,158,283 for the 2019 fund here. Reserve for uncollected taxes are $900,000. This number has remained the same, it will be the same as last year. What this does is it assists in creating some sort of positive cash flow for the municipality to be able to fund schools and things of the sort, just in case there are delinquent taxes and things like that. The event service this year of $2,185,000, that includes all of our principal and interest on all of the town debt. We also have salaries of $6,818,024. Budget revenues that are anticipated are $5,919,810, as well as $13,141,497, as the amount to be raised by taxes in 2019. As far as the local municipal catch rate, the 2019 budget is $813,558 under the tax levy cap, and that is commonly referred to as the tuition cap that people often refer to. And it's also under the appropriations cap by $282,646, and that is the cap on what the town is permitted to spend on a annual basis. The 2018 assessed value of the municipality is $1,497,257,100, and the 2019 assessed value of the municipality is $1,509,81, a substantial increase there in the town's valuation. The municipal taxes are projected for 2019 at .871 cents on the dollar. 2018 municipal actual taxes were .846 cents. So the question is, what does that mean? That means there is a change in .025 cents on per hundred dollars of assessed valuation over the 2018 tax rate. The 2019 average on the township was valued at $309,000. This year, I'm sorry, that was 2019, this upcoming year, 2019, in 2018, it was down a little bit at $306,000. So what does that mean? That means municipal taxes in 2018 on the average home were $2,640, and in 2019, it increased to $2,691, an increase of $77 on the year, or $6,42 on the average month. So there are some budget highlights this year. It's that we have an anticipated surplus of $1.4 million for 2019 budget. This, as many know, has been an issue that the town faced in 2018, was the flood on August 11. And as a result of the flood, the municipality spent $350,000, which is now also needed to reimburse the surplus this upcoming year. Space statute requires that any funds used for emergency appropriations need to be raised in the following year. So that $77 per year increase and that, again, two and a half point increase that we saw on the prior slide, if you actually crunched the numbers, had not been for the flood, where the municipality spent $350,000 with zero reimbursement from FEMA, had everything else in the budget remained the same, there would have actually been a $0 increase in the 2019 calendar year. But unfortunately, the surplus needs to be replenished. That also assists with bond rating and some of the other things. But, again, had there been a zero, had the flood not occurred, it's easy to say, would have, could have, should have, but had there not been any emergency appropriations spent in August of 2018, we could have had the exact same budget, sorry, the exact same result in the budget, a zero increase in 2019. That said, library taxes are at $545,011 in 2019. Assessed values of the municipality, as we saw on the prior slide, increased by $11,823,900. Appropriations have been set to reflect the salary increase of the customers, but that contract has not been settled at this time, and so exact dollars are not completely deferred. There are administrative salary increases set to reflect a 2.5% base increase. Public employees' retirement system cost per employee for the municipality is $6,837.20 in the average employee. There are going to be several changes in the municipalities' administrative positions in 2019. We're looking to move a part-time administrative clerk to a full-time administrative clerk in a construction office, which has had a lot of, to the town's benefit, a lot of work done over the past couple of years. Some additional highlights include salaries for police having been incorporated into the 2019 budget in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, at a 2% increase this year, and police and fire pension costs reflect a cost per officer of $30,535.71. We're going to, oh, we have, before I get into some of the additional budget highlights this year, in 2019, Little Falls was recognized as one of the safest cities in New Jersey, and I am proud to say, by our Police Chief Stephen Post, that we received this information just really this weekend, and we are ecstatic that Little Falls was announced as one of the safest cities here in New Jersey. For just some average statistics, Little Falls ranked number 78 on the list of safest cities in New Jersey. For some comparison with nearby towns, Woodland Park ranked 139, Totowa at 210, Montclair at 140, and Wayne was at 168. So, Chief, thank you to you and your department for everything you do. With that, we are going to continue our vehicle acquisition program that we started a number of years ago here in Little Falls. We're going to continue to purchase two new vehicles each year for our police department, so that there's never a surge in the budget, where we purchased eight cars in one year and then none for the next three or four years, and then we purchase eight again. So by continuing with our vehicle acquisition program and purchasing two vehicles per year, we never reckon as you realize a surge in the budget, and we're able to cycle cars at a very good rate without the cost of repairs exceeding the value of the vehicle. The 2019 budget also anticipates increasing current levels of staff in our police department to 30, and an increase staffing in our DPW to 14. As far as other budget highlights, insurance costs to the municipality, and this is a general trend, I think, across the country, insurance costs continue to increase year after year after year. Insurance costs to the municipality are no different. This year, insurance costs are around $91,500 over last year's insurance premiums. The EMS program costs, the EMS service costs are a budget of $362,856, with offsetting revenues of $260,000. This is something that has been a topic of discussion, I know, in the past years. And while we are hope, this is something that, again, the services of our EMS have dramatically increased since the full-time EMS program has been implemented, with zero additional costs to the taxpayers, with response times being absolutely incredible and well below the international standards. That said, there are also PFRS pension costs increased this year by $240,000. So if you look at just insurance costs and PFRS pension cost increases, you're already there at the $330,000 in an increase in the budget. That said, the PFRS formula is something that is limited by the state. They provide us with the calculation, so this is just a substantial increase that the municipality has to figure out how to put the numbers in their budget. And I think a lot of this goes back to the state for a number of years, underfunding pension funds. But it seems like that is being deferred to municipalities now, and we are stopped for a $240,000 increase in our PFRS pension contributions. And finally, in 2019, debt service costs are actually down from last year by almost $100,000 at $98,500. Finally, capital budget addresses the needs of our township's infrastructure and equipment requirements, and authorized by the council, will reflect an increase in current debt of $503,000. This figure remains very stable for the municipality. It is not an excessive number that will throw our budget into any sort of tizzy. $503,000 is what we are anticipating in capital budget for this upcoming year. And finally, we have the, as I indicated in the beginning, the longer budget presentation with far more detailed information will be presented on March 11, 2019, before the introduction by the council, and the public hearing adoption on the budget will occur at the April 8, 2019.
Does the Council have any questions for the mayor regarding the budget this time? Mr. Wenzel?
No report.
Have a motion, a second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council, they do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address, or record comments, or fill in any three minutes, however appropriate, and maybe grant additional time, in the sole discretion of the Council President.
For those residents that would like to discuss the budget, if you would ask those questions first, this way we could get that topic first underway. If anyone has any questions concerning the budget, you're welcome to come up. If not, welcome to come up and approach the podium. Mr. Tobin, anything? Mr. Fernandez? Chair, come on up. This would be for agenda items only.
Agenda items. Kathleen Zeniger, 141 Brower Town Road.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm here to talk about the two ordinances for the tax abatement for the Singac redevelopment area. According to the Office of the New Jersey State Comptroller, in his programmatic examination of municipal tax abatements, payments to municipalities by businesses and developers in lieu of taxes, known as pilot payments, distort municipal incentives in using and structuring abatements at the expense of counties, school districts, and other taxpayers. Specifically, under the long-term abatement statute, 95% of the negotiated pilot is kept by the municipality, and 5% goes to the county. The local school districts get nothing. In this case, the per property that has been generating approximately $297,000 in tax revenue, of which Little Falls Schools receive about $93,000, and PV receives about $46,000, these will be lost by those school districts as a result of the pilot payment. The new development may also add new unfunded services and burdens on the school. Who pays for that? Pilot shift to tax burden among regional and local taxpayers. Little Falls residents will have to make up the lost school tax revenues. Little Falls, Totowa, and Woodland Park will have to increase their PV tax allocations. The remaining Say County communities will have to increase their county tax allocations. Yes, Little Falls itself will still get most of the tax revenue that it is receiving now, but every other entity on our individual tax bills will have to increase. That means that Little Falls then will be able to say next year that they kept their taxes at the same, or our taxes low, or at the same level. But the county and schools will be made to grow. Little Falls will only be able to say that, though, for maybe five, 10, 20, 30, and possibly even 35 years. What happens then? This tax, what happens after this tax, because this tax abatement, it goes for either 30 years, depending on the construction, or 35 years. According to Section A of each ordinance, pursuant to the attached financial agreement, the rental townhouse projects are assumed to generate revenue for the township well in excess of the municipal revenue generated by ad valorem taxes in 2018. The financial agreement is not included in the council agenda, so it's a bit difficult to know exactly what a revenue for the township, well in excess of the municipal revenue generated by ad valorem taxes, would be. However, if I've calculated correctly, the properties affected now generate approximately $297,000. According to the abatement statute, Little Falls will receive approximately $80,000. If the pilot is exactly what they are now, Little Falls will get approximately $76,000, and Say County will get $4,000, and the schools will get nothing. If the development pays a pilot well in excess of the municipal revenue generated by ad valorem, Little Falls will get 95%, Say County will get 5%, and the schools will still get nothing. According to the Singac redevelopment's plan of existing conditions, areas in need of development investigation summary, criteria A, buildings are unsafe, substandard, undecentary, one building was found to be in that condition. Criteria B, the discontinuance of the use of buildings previously used for commercial manufacturing and industries, one property in that area was found to meet that criteria. Criteria D, areas with buildings that are improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, da-da-da-da-da-da, 11 were found out. However, of those 11, there's an exclusion, that they may be included even if they themselves are not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, but the inclusion of which, with or without changes, their condition is necessary for the effective redevelopment of the area of which they are in a part of. Nine properties met that description. I have a map of the area. I also have pictures of every building that is going to be, and business that is going to be torn down, to allow the developer to get that magnificent...
Excuse me, Mrs. Zeniger, for the record, you have to stay into the mic so we can keep you recorded.
That will allow that developer to get that magnificent windfall. Why? If you and everyone in here, I am guessing, lives in Little Falls and has driven down Main Street, you know what those buildings look like. Granted, there may be one that should be torn down. Every other one is a decent building. There are probably other areas of Little Falls that look worse than that section of Main Street. Why do we need to give a tax abatement to that developer?
You can stay there, Mrs. Zeniger. So, Mrs. Zeniger brings before this governing body comments and her concerns concerning Orders 1345 and 1346. So for the residents that are here and the public, this is concerning the rainbow, as the township knows it, as the Rainbow Caters track, that those who have lived here refer to that.
It's more than that.
Well, we kind of refer to it as the Rainbow Caters track. It is more than that, you are correct. But so, I'm just trying to point out a landmark for the residents, so for those that don't know where it is, Mrs. Zeniger.
Excuse me, if anyone would like, I have a picture of the map. I have a picture of the map.
You have to wait.
If anyone would like to see it. If they're not familiar with the area.
Yeah, no, I understand, but you have to, now the comments are from the deists here. Does the Council have any questions or comments regarding the statements brought forth tonight? Councilwoman Coordinator?
I just have one comment. Anybody who would have gone to meetings where the mayor first presented an estimate of development zone, and we would have had our town planner there, would have seen all the pictures of the buildings and the conditions they were in, and the issues in the area, and the problems in the area. It was a lengthy presentation. I think there was more than one presentation. Then it got presented to the planning board, and by the way, I don't recall any objections at that time, I could be wrong. Then it got presented at the planning board, and then, again, due diligence with the planner, and the planning board does go into a lot of questions and details, and then it comes back to the council. So this has been vetted and reviewed with the town over a period of time. I just want to make that clear.
Are the planning board agendas posted?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
So, certainly, the council agendas are posted. So, you know, that's, I just want to make that clear, that this has been something that has been very transparent, that has been ongoing for quite some time, and not something that just is getting presented in front of the...
And the pilot program was brought up when?
Mayor, did you...
From what I've seen...
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that question? I'm sorry.
The tax abatement for that project was brought up?
When that initially was...
Right.
It's this what we're discussing tonight? It's on the agenda tonight?
Was it ever discussed for the, in the redevelopment...
Mayor, would you like to comment on when the tax abatement program was thought of or came about to light with the pilot program?
The first discussions of the pilot actually began in, like, 2017, and...
I don't see them in the summary in your survey.
They would not be part of the planner's report...
They would not be part of the planner's report in determining whether an area meets the area in need of redevelopment criteria. So, no, they would not be in the, if that's what you are referring to, and that's the review, you know, the planner does not deal with pilots and financial aspects. They simply dealt with determining whether or not an area met the area redevelopment criteria.
Mayor, would you like to talk any further on the benefits of the pilot program?
Absolutely. So, whether they're called municipal tax abatements, which they are on the face legally, this is something, what we are referring to here is also commonly referred to as a pilot, as you indicate, a pilot in lieu of taxes, in lieu of taxes. You also indicated that the school revenues will be lost to the school districts. Theoretically, under a pilot, municipalities do have the authority to provide zero dollars as a result of the pilot to the school districts. However, I've spoken to a lot of the school district members, had discussions with them about the municipality and its ability to allocate funds through its budget to the school district. So, yes, you are correct, there's no absolute requirement for the municipality to do that. But the municipality is, as far as I see, not in the business of shorthand in the school districts. And if there's going to be a benefit to the municipality, the school district should not be hurt as a result of that benefit. So, this pilot is not something that's being entered into to allow myself or this council to put ourselves in a path for reducing taxes. But the revenues that this pilot will generate for the municipality will assist greatly in paying down debt service, all of the debt that the municipality has, and if done properly and budgeted properly over that thirty-year period that you were referring to, a good portion of the municipal taxes could and should be paid down over, sorry, the municipal debts should be paid down over a period of time, in turn, reducing taxes to taxpayers over the length of this pilot and beyond the pilot expiring thirty years from now. So, your concerns that the school will be shorthanded, again, is certainly a valid concern, one that I immediately, when the pilot began being discussed, sat down with our superintendent and had discussions with her about it. So, yes, very valid concern, but it has been discussed with the school district. Next, the property criteria, as you were referring to them, again, that is a study that was brought forth in the planning board and this council on a number of occasions. It was presented, there were public comments to be asked to the planner, addressing concerns at the time. There were, no, there were actually a good number of people in the audience for both the planning board presentation as well as the council presentation, and I do recall there were some questions, but none that were not easily addressed by the planner. That said, all of the property that was acquired by this developer was done with no eminent domain. So, any property purchased was on a private contract. Nobody was forced to sell. In fact, there were certainly some holdouts that I know the developer had some trouble, and it would have thrown this whole pipeline into a loop, and that would have been a risk that they were taking. That was up to them to decide how they negotiated their contracts. The municipality had absolutely zero to do as far as assisting with the developer acquiring any of these properties. So, whether those individuals sold their property for a hundred, no, ninety-nine percent below market value, or a couple hundred percent of market value, if we're using the assessed value to, for argument's sake, was one hundred percent up to the developer and the private person, the private individual whom they purchased the property from. That said, when acquiring properties in a tract such as this, the acquisition costs of properties typically extend, typically tend to far exceed what really the fair market value of them may actually be. Because as word gets out that properties are being acquired, magically, the properties become worth double or triple the value that they may have otherwise been. It would be economically and feasible for developers working in this manner to complete projects that would ever generate a dollar of profit for them if pilots were not extended to them. So, the detriment that you're referring to, while there may be some, in some studies, and there's arguments, I'm sure, and studies both ways that would confirm what you've said, and some, I'm sure, would mean the opposite way and disagree with your statements, I'm not going to agree or disagree. What I'm going to do is tell you that the benefits to the municipality are tremendous, that the schools are not going to be hurt in any way, and that the reason, your final question is why give this tax abatement? The reason is because for this project to occur, at all, the pilot must be offered to the developer to make it economically feasible.
No one else would develop that property without a tax abatement.
So, all I can say is that those properties have been there for a number of years, nobody else has.
Mm-hmm. Because they weren't going to be able to get the entire portion of it.
No, again, the, they were all private, the developer negotiated the same as all of his private. But because an area in the redevelopment study was done, which then in turn permits a pilot to be offered, there was that interest in...
So, the properties were bought prior to the study or after the study?
I'm sure you remember, yeah, so, to be clear, they're all contracts, meaning that it's all contingent upon the finalization of all of this. So, he hasn't actually closed on the properties until the process is concluded.
And the redevelopment plan was done after he bought all of the properties?
No.
It was done before he did, he bought all the properties, which made it advantageous?
He was buying all the properties, no, it was not done before or after all of the properties.
And in the, in the ordinance, it says the financial statement, and the financial statement was not included about the...
The municipalities, and I haven't explained the municipalities' process on making documents available to the public, or that they are generally not made available prior to introduction. Once, once ordinances are introduced, all documents associated with introduction are then made available to the public, so that full comments can be provided at the second reading.
At the second reading.
In the public comment portion of each particular adoption ordinance.
So, we can't see the immense benefit this is going to do until next time.
That's correct.
And that's the second reading, when you have to make your decision right then?
That has been...
Without the information? Because you're telling me the schools are going to be taken care of? I didn't hear you mention PV, but you told me Little Falls is going to be taken care of.
That has been the, since, for at least two years now, and maybe prior to that, I can only speak for two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, when I've been sitting as mayor, typically, if they had been provided prior, as they were in this case, it's more accidental than anything, or a portion of them to the public to have. The intent is not to withhold information. Transparency is one of the top priorities here, and documents, until they are introduced, the ordinances, until they are introduced, are subject to modification until the minute they're introduced. So, providing information to the public that might not, that may be modified up until the minute something is introduced by this council is a piece of paper worth nothing.
So, even the modifications to the redevelopment plan, that it went from having businesses downstairs to having residences upstairs, has changed, and even that?
That is issued at the planning board.
And the zoning end will, is taken care of?
Correct.
Nice.
The floor is open?
I don't understand quite well what a pilot program, how it works, and the tax, the tax abatement and all that. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Mayor, I'm sorry, you wanted to joke something? Counsel, what are we doing ping pong here? Mayor, why don't you just, counsel, give what a pilot program is?
Right, way for coin, huh?
Yeah, really?
I never get to answer Mr. Fernandez's questions. I feel left out. So, the pilot program, and this was brought up by the prior party at the podium, the, as the pilot moves along for the thirty-year period, this is a thirty-year, as the lady indicated, thirty-five year, depending on when the process starts, but assuming it's a thirty-year program, the payment in lieu of taxes is literally a payment in lieu of taxes. So, right now, each one of those properties, just like you do, Mr. Fernandez, and anybody else who lives in the township, Little Falls, pays taxes based upon an assessed value, land and improvement, okay? And you pay those taxes yearly. What this is, is it exempts the improvement portion of your taxes. So, you pay a land tax for your lot, and you pay an improvement portion, a land assessment towards your taxes, and an improvement assessment towards your taxes. What this does is it removes the improvement assessment for payment of taxes. Land taxes are still paid by the developer or the owner of the property. The improvement is instead changed, what would have been an improvement assessment is changed over a payment in lieu of taxes based upon what's known as an annual service charge. And then this gets into very deep weeds on this, but basically, what is done is there is a projection made on the value and the cost of that project over a thirty-year period, and payments are made in accordance with a sliding scale over time. So, at the beginning, there's a lesser payment being made than towards the end. So, the prior person asks a question about what happens at the thirty-year period. At the end of the thirty-year period, the property is reassessed for the land and the improvement, and is returned to the regular tax rolls at that point. So, whatever that value is in thirty years from now, that's what the tax assessor will do to determine what that value is once that property goes back on. But over time, what in essence happens is that the improvement portion pays up towards where that tax would be approximately. It's not going to be an exact, but it's going to be approximately at that point. So, you see these very often in other municipalities, and they will be paying this amount towards the municipality. You heard what the mayor said before, this payment in lieu of taxes actually goes into the municipality not as taxes, but as a payment in lieu of taxes. Then the municipality has the flexibility to determine what, how it wants to decide in terms of appropriating those funds when that revenue comes in. So, I don't know if I answered your question. You sat down and said, stay at the podium. Usually, you stay at the podium, Mr. Scoban.
It's Councilman Scoban.
I figured it was going to be a lengthy...
Mr. Fernandez, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I figured it was going to be a lengthy explanation. But I, basically, they get a tax break. Am I correct?
Well, no, let me say this, what's being, it's not necessarily a tax break, it's a tax, the best way to think about it is a tax estimation over a period of time.
Which will be a tax break as well, because they may not end up paying the amount that they should have been paying.
So, Mr. Fernandez, to be clear, and I think this may help answer your question, the amount paid in the pilot can never be less than what the standard taxes that would be paid on the property are, can never be less. In fact, oftentimes, they far exceed the prior taxes paid on the property, usually by severalfold.
Okay. The floor is open?
Yeah. Bob Nebraska, Three Quarter Street.
Good evening.
I know there's not, what part of this process do we, do we go through the flooding aspect? I mean, since two thousand and five, three times, them parcels of properties, recently this August, where that water was coming through there, all for twenty-three, with traffic, how do we stop buses? What aspect, does the flooding aspect take effect? Well, there's additional water right now that's coming down them streets. You're buying houses and adding water, or is this go through, when does that be addressed?
Mr. Nebraska, you're asking us if this development would cause more flooding?
No, I want to know if the flooding aspect is, it is flooding, it's not in a flood zone now.
Right.
But it does flood, and it floods horrifically as of this past August. So, what's being done to, address it now?
Okay.
Before any new development goes in there? What are you telling us, I live on them streets, because it's not going to get better by any improvement, we just want to improve from the condition it is now? The addition, the runoff that comes behind Falls Meadow, South Gray Rock, runs across Main Street, three to four feet high, at least four times in the last ten years. So, what's being done before this development starts to fix that problem first? Or are you going to build and clog up the rest of the undeveloped land and add more water down to our streets? That's my only question.
Mayor?
I think I may help address that, Council President. The project, as it was presented to the planning board, actually, first, the project itself is a decrease in the current impervious surface of that site. So, that is an improvement without any actual infrastructure.
I understood, I read all that.
In fact, there is additional infrastructure to be maintained in this site as well. Some of that include the underground storage tanks or stuff pipes that are going to be exonerated from the property are going to be incredibly oversized. And the developer actually has no obligation to do that whatsoever by the county or the municipality, because the impervious surface is being decreased. To be a, I'll call it a good neighbor, the developer has agreed to oversize substantially the pipes that are going to be exonerated in the streets there within the site. They also agreed to slow down the flow of the water that comes from their site to our street system in an effort to retain some of that additional water on site. So, they will be decreasing the amount of water that makes it into our current system.
Yeah, because I've been asking this for the last year, it's the first time I actually got a response, you know, to that situation.
Until the developer presents support plans, and has an engineer who is able to assist in the negotiations of what the developer is willing to do, it was difficult to give the added sort of...
I understand. I didn't know how long it would work on this process, or whether you forgot about me, which I knew you did.
No.
All right, thank you.
The floor is open. See no else come forward, have a motion, a second to close? I'm sorry, Mr. Tobin? This is agenda items only, sir.
James Tobin, six Francisco Avenue.
Good evening.
Hi. You were asking me earlier if I wanted to come up. At the time, it was regarding the budget.
You could speak about the budget.
No, it's not, it's not the budget, it's...
What would you want to speak about, sir?
It's about this thirteen forty-five and thirteen forty-six.
You could speak about it, go ahead.
My understanding is the tax abatement, it's just, from my understanding, there's like a hundred and eighty-five units going to be built. Are these going to be rentals, or are these going to be owned, a hundred and eighty-five units?
Okay.
Are these condos, or are these going to be apartments that are rented?
So, it's a two-stage, it's a two-pronged development with townhomes and apartment building?
Because the concern I would have is why, I would think Little Falls is looking for tax ratables, which means you want to have more property tax income coming in, and it seems to me to give a break, is it's a break for a developer. Who's paying the taxes on, who's going to pay the property taxes for thirty-five years on that development?
Right. So, as it was explained this evening, and we'll explain it again, Mayor, would you like to explain how the pilot works, that the township is not going to be losing money, if that's what you're concerned with?
Yes, I am concerned with that. That's thirty-five years of a free ride for a developer, a builder. Who's paying taxes on that property for thirty-five years?
There's no free ride whatsoever. In fact, the amount of taxes that the property is anticipated to generate is three or four times greater than it currently generates.
How is that going to be generated by?
Because the assessment of the property increases exponentially.
The value.
Correct. So, for that reason, they are, the way that a pilot works, they receive, I mean, well, you're sixty-five percent, because that's the number that it starts with, and again, it typically increases over time. But the way that it works is the municipality retains sixty-five percent of a number that is exponentially higher than a hundred percent that it was previously receiving on a far lower number. So, in very, very rough numbers, and it's terrible, don't hold me on these, and I have nothing in front of me to, to, to this gentleman, use very rough numbers, hypothetically speaking, that project, as Mrs. Zeniger is generating right now, roughly three hundred thousand dollars in total taxes. The municipality receives roughly seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. The municipality receives roughly seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars from that site. The remaining go is divided between the schools, usually about fifty percent of our total taxes, the remaining twenty-five percent of the county. If you keep that number in mind, the property was previously generating about three hundred thousand dollars.
Are these real numbers, or?
Those are real numbers, yes.
So you're saying, you're saying that area is paying Little Falls property taxes, let's say, three hundred something thousand dollars?
Correct. With, the municipality retaining about twenty-five percent of it, the schools receiving about fifty percent of it, and the remaining twenty-five percent of the county.
Of that three hundred and something?
Right. As it's a common, for every dollar of property tax is received from every property owner in the municipality, and again, these are rough numbers. Municipality takes quarter, county takes quarter, school's getting about fifty percent.
Okay. It's the, it's the terminology of abatement. It, it has the look and the feel of somebody not paying property taxes for a period of time, for thirty-five years, actually. They, they are free and clear of paying any kind of property taxes for thirty-five.
They're not free and clear whatsoever.
That's why.
It's a deduction in the total. And I personally, I agree with the term abatement.
Just logic, I'm trying to figure this out.
Has a certain negative connotation associated with it. But it is not a free ride, it means. So if you make hypothetical, if that property were previously generating thirty thousand dollars in total, the county takes a quarter. If a hundred and two townhomes are built, which is part of this project.
How many?
A hundred and two.
For that same three hundred and thirty thousand?
So it's two hundred and eighty-seven total units being built, a hundred and two townhomes, and a hundred and eighty-five apartments.
Okay. Now, in that piece of real estate, you're saying it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars taxes coming in right now?
Three hundred, about three hundred thousand.
Okay, I'm with you so far.
The townhomes, and again, I'm doing this with a calculator off of my head. That property, I'm just a hundred and two townhomes alone, which is just half, less than half the total project there. If there were, if they were each sold at five hundred thousand dollars, hypothetically, each of these two townhomes, times one hundred townhomes, that's fifty million dollars, that that site is now assessed. If they were to pay conventional taxes on that fifty million dollars of assessed value, that site would now pay a total of one million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, at times our current tax rate of three one six. The municipality would receive about a quarter of that, or three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
But that's a good thing, if you were able to get that done.
It is, but now.
That's, that's, that's good income.
Now, the municipality actually has to be paying about sixty-five percent of that total number, rather than twenty-five percent. And the county, the county takes a reduction of five percent of the money. I'm sorry, takes a reduction to five percent, rather than their prior twenty-five percent. But that five percent that the county continues to get, and if you bear with me, the one point five million dollar number, times point of life is seventy-five thousand dollars. So the county who was previously getting seventy-five thousand dollars, and again, this is just half of the site, will continue to get seventy-five thousand dollars from just the townhome portion of this, excluding the apartments. So they are not harmed in any way. They actually will receive a substantial amount more from this development than they are presently. The municipality, again, will receive sixty, remaining sixty percent of that number that is substantially higher than the current assessment. So we are allowing them to pay a smaller percentage on a much greater number, and that is being paid. It is not a free ride, it is not a non-payment of taxes, except for, it's not taxes, it's a payment being made in lieu of taxes, but avoiding that free ride that was previously assessed.
Perhaps it's not a free ride. What is a good term for that, then? Why is that such a great incentive? That's a terrific incentive for a builder.
Correct.
Why is it being done? Why isn't somebody else? Why doesn't Little Falls do that?
Because, now, these numbers, again, I'm going to, I'm going to make these up with you. Well, let's say that site was assessed at about eight million dollars, or worth about eight million dollars prior to the developer coming in saying, I want to gather a block of buildings or homes or whatever they need. The problem is that when a developer starts to pursue grouping all of these units or buildings or homes together, it seems that values tend to, no, threefold. So the eight million dollar assessed value probably costs this developer twenty to twenty-five billion dollars to apply. Now, it might have been economically feasible for someone to buy one site, do something on it, do own business there, and keep that in the board. But when something ends up costing you three times, two, three times more than it may have otherwise cost, because word is out, there's developers who make money on this, those properties increase. So there are, I guess, all, then it's across the board to the people who are settling down, to the municipality, and I'm sure the developer is not going to walk away losing money on a project. So there are, it is mutually beneficial to enter into this group.
Who will the property owner be for the thirty, thirty-five years? The entity?
So on the hundred and two townhomes, those, they're being sold as townhomes, the pilot transfers to the owner, and they will pay the payment in lieu of taxes, or will still make a payment to the town. And the pilot for the hundred and eighty-five unit apartments does transfer to the property owner, the developer.
So for thirty, thirty-five years?
Thirty years.
That developer's, for the most part, getting the tax break, tax free, if you will, they don't have to pay property taxes for that. Is that, is that correct?
Well, they're making a payment in lieu of taxes.
And payment in, in what way?
They will write a check each quarter to the municipality, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars.
And that's that special fee that I heard about, that, that?
It's called special fee.
Well, it's not.
The annuals, I think.
The annual fee.
Service charge.
It's just a term, Jim. Pilot, pilot has, pilot, pilot is, think about it, a pilot's a pilot, and.
I didn't give them these names.
This is like a test, this is like a test.
I always use the terms that were given to me. Personally, I would like to call it a fee to the town to do this.
Why doesn't Little Falls, rather than give that advantage to a developer or the entity, why doesn't Little Falls develop that?
Because Little Falls doesn't have twenty-five million dollars, or five million dollars of property.
So in order to get that thing developed, you have to do all these fancy dances to let them come in and do that, then?
Correct. They get mutually beneficial, so that the developer makes money, I'm sure, so that the municipality makes money.
What is the relationship between the entity and the township of Little Falls?
They want the properties.
What is the relationship between the town and Little Falls, though?
They will be property owners in the town.
And they are not now?
They're contract purchasers.
I'm sorry?
They are under contract, and the contract triggers on all the approvals on this project.
Okay. And prior to that contract, they don't own anything in Little Falls, this entity?
Not that I know of.
They're not building anything currently, or have built anything in town?
No, they don't, no.
None of the construction and redevelopment going on in town is not of this entity doing?
Not, no. Only within this area can you redevelop, develop property there. I, I can't say that the developer himself has owned a single family home, so, I don't know, but not, not pending the board's schedule.
Anything else, Mr. Tobin?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming out. Floor is open.
Kim Doran, twenty-two Route View Circle.
Good evening.
I'll set myself a three-minute time. My question has to do with just the geography of it. Currently, there's, as you're going, I believe it's on the left side of Main Street going down to Route twenty-three.
Correct.
And it starts about where the liquor store is now?
So the liquor store is on the eastern side of Woodside Avenue.
Yes.
There are then homes, and then usually garage, or auto body type, or a valet garage, and residential units along the, was actually the western side of Woodside Avenue. This area in need of redevelopment starts just beyond those properties of that garage and all of those single-family or duplex homes on Woodside Avenue.
So it would start with what was once the animal clinic?
Correct.
Okay. And where does it end, going towards twenty-three?
It ends right before you get to the rusty paint area, there was one property in the area in need of development.
Ah, okay. Before the tracks?
That was acquired because that person didn't want to sell.
Uh-huh. So it ends before the railroad tracks, that, okay. And what, how many total family units are we looking at? It sounds to me like about two hundred and fifty?
Two eighty-seven. A hundred and two townhomes and a hundred and eighty-five apartments.
Okay. And plus some business locations?
No, no retail.
No retail?
No.
Okay, okay. And do we need any, the parking is off-street, I gather?
Yes. The planning board addressed this at recent meetings in March, I'm sorry, February, there is a four-story parking garage that's going to be associated with the hundred and eighty-five apartments. There are also garage, driveway, and additional parking to a hundred and two townhomes.
Okay. So, because, earlier, I, the only thing that brought me to the podium is I heard a number above a thousand that I was.
There's no number above a thousand, there's not even close to it. Do you have any other questions?
I didn't know what it, what it was about. So, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. The floor is open. See no else come forward, count a motion and a second to close the public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
Mayor, you have any responses you want to give on the consent agenda?
No, consent agenda is fairly standard.
Does council have any issues with consent agenda? Mr. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember, Court Chair?
Yes.
Councilmember, Kowad?
Yes.
Councilmember, Receiver?
Yes.
Councilmember, Red Cherry?
Yes.
Council President, Scoban.
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one, three, four, five. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Introduction of ordinance number one, three, four, five, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls, the County of Passaic State of New Jersey, to authorize and approve the application for tax exemption and financial agreement binding between the Township of Little Falls and Little Falls Redevelopers Urban Renewal LLC for scenic industrial zone redevelopment area with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance one, three, four, five?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll, please.
Councilmember, Court Chair?
Yes.
Councilmember, Kowad?
Yes.
Councilmember, Receiver?
Yes.
Councilmember, Red Cherry?
Yes.
Council President, Scoban.
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one, three, four, six.
Introduction of ordinance number one, three, four, six, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls, the County of Passaic State of New Jersey, to authorize and approve the application for tax exemption and financial agreement binding between the Township of Little Falls and Little Falls Townhomes Redevelopers Urban Renewal LLC for scenic industrial zone redevelopment area with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen.
Count a motion and a second to introduce ordinance one, three, four, six.
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember, Court Chair?
Yes.
Councilmember, Kowad?
Yes.
Councilmember, Receiver?
Yes.
Councilmember, Red Cherry?
Yes.
Council President, Scoban.
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one, three, four, seven.
Introduction of ordinance number one, three, four, seven, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls, the County of Passaic State of New Jersey, amending the township approach chapter one twenty-six, literate for the second reading and public hearing scheduled for March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance one, three, four, seven?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember, Court Chair?
Yes.
Councilmember, Kowad?
Yes.
Councilmember, Receiver?
Yes.
Council President, Scoban.
Yes. Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public comment for general matters only?
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Any of you wishing to address the Township Council, may you sit with the Council President, please give your name and address for the record, comments, or any other items in three minutes, or appropriate. You may create an additional time in the sole expression of the Council President.
The floor is open. Someone is coming up before you. Go ahead, Ms. Zeniker, he yelled to you. You don't have to.
Kathleen Zeniker, one forty-one Brower Town Road. A few questions came up while you were explaining your thing. We did get copies of the ordinances, and the ordinances only talked about the A paper that we don't have. Nowhere in the ordinance does it say that there is going to be any increase in the payments as the project goes on. I think that in order to understand fully, I mean, even if the no numbers were given, just the fact that when it's no land at all, we're going to be getting this much, when there's this much construction, well, excuse me, when there's just land, after everything's ripped down, that we're going to, they're, they're going to give us this much, and then it will increase proportionately the payments until the thirty or thirty-five years are up, would have been an important piece of information to have included in this, because we're sitting here not knowing anything except what the law says, and the law doesn't say what you said.
Mr. Wenzel, would you like to comment on what, how this is drafted for the public?
First of all, we have to remember that with any ordinance, it's a two-step process. The ordinance gets introduced at one meeting, and then there is a public hearing which occurs on the ordinance at the second meeting, which is March twenty-five, twenty nineteen. Between now, March twenty-five, twenty nineteen, the ordinance itself is published, the documents associated with the ordinance are will be made available for public viewing, and at that point, that is where the mayor was talking about in terms of the ordinance being made into its final stage, because obviously, if the council decided, they just decided to introduce it, but if the council decided not to introduce it, it would all be a futile exercise.
So we may never know what the financial aspect was.
No, that's exactly not what I said. What I said was that after it gets introduced, all those documents and all that information will be made available, and at the public hearing on the twenty-fifth, you can certainly come forward and ask those questions if you haven't been satisfied by what you have viewed and the information you have received, and you certainly have the ability to question the mayor and municipal council with regard to those issues, and you have the appropriate answers at that point.
Does any, do you have another question, Ms. Zeniker?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
From everything that I've known, and my son lives in a, in a city that does have pilot programs, they're usually for blighted areas where they are ramshackled, where there may be nothing at all, because the city has already torn it down, and they do have to entice people to come and build. This to me, and I, and I've read states' opinions on it, too, where the state is now considering changing the way this program works, that it's not meant for towns that are not blighted and are not really urban districts. I don't understand why, and you can tell me all you want, that it's a win-win, until I see it, it's not a win-win, because there's a reason why we give a tax abatement, it's got to be a win for somebody, and as far as I can see, it's not us.
Does the council have any questions or concern regarding Mrs. Zeniker's questions? Councilwoman, Court Chair?
Ms. Zeniker, did you happen to walk that area?
Yes, I've walked that many times.
In, in the back by the buildings?
I know somebody who used to live there.
In the?
In one of those houses.
In the industrial, in the industrial buildings?
But one building was considered, in your study, one of all of the buildings, to be in the condition that would really make it like one out of eleven buildings.
Mayor, what portion of that area had residents?
There were only three, one duplex, one rental.
Right, there's two houses.
And was there, we already know the amount of revenue that the town got, and what the assessed value was, which means when we have low assessed values like that, everybody else has to shoulder, you know, shoulder the burden of what it costs to maintain the town. Did that area, forgetting Rainbow Caterers, which we've gotten numerous complaints about from the residents around that area, did that area employ a lot of people?
I don't know the numbers to that, not in recent years, but what I can tell you is that eight acres of property in Little Falls was generating a total of three hundred thousand dollars in taxes per year. That means the properties in the subject area were not superior-type buildings, modern that were, again, generating great values. This brings back to, this brings back on the earlier comments of the town needs to find additional values, and this is that narrative.
Yeah.
And, Kim, I have another question. And for the homes surrounding, across the street, on Ludcliffe Avenue, et cetera, would you say that once this development goes in, that their property values would, I know it's an opinion, but could go up because they wouldn't be having food trucks going in and out at four o'clock in the morning, German abandoned buildings, trucks, et cetera?
So purely my opinion, definitely our professionals there, they assume that all surrounding property values would increase in some shape or form.
Ms. Zennaker, we appreciate you coming out, it's apparent that you object to this type of development on this track of land, maybe for the financial reasons, or other, maybe even aesthetic reasons, and we appreciate those comments. Do you have other questions?
Well, you brought up the condition. We do have building codes, we do have a building inspector, we're gonna have a littering ordinance, we're gonna have a new fence, or change. I don't understand why, if we have these ordinances, they're not enforced. Every other building there, besides the caterer, is a decent building. Three eighty-one opened up there and improved it, illegal, went in and fixed it up, Rossi Paints went in and fixed it up, none of them needed a tax abatement, they were fixing them up just because that's where they wanted to be, and they wanted to be in Little Falls, and we didn't need a tax abatement to make them come.
What? Thank you.
My only comment is I note your frustration with pilot, I, we disagree, we really disagree on this variation.
When I see the financials, we'll see.
Thank you, you're welcome to have another opinion, and welcome for your questions and comments when it comes up again. Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I'm not the only one that sees these, doesn't understand these pilots.
Mr. Fernandez, can you do it for the, for the record? You have to say your name.
Excuse me.
Even though I said it, you have to say it.
Fifty-four, fifty-four Harrison Street.
Thank you.
I guess, I'm, I'm happy that I'm not the only one that doesn't understand these pilot things too much. And, and to make things more complicated, when you read the ordinances, it says to authorize and approve the application for a tax exemption, both of them. So to me, a tax exemption is like, you're giving something away, you're, you're exempt from paying taxes, so that's where it gets confusing, at least on my, on my part.
Mr. Graham, I'm gonna give you this analogy, if I told you, or I told every homeowner in Little Falls, like federally, I will give you an exemption from all taxes, that you need to write a check to the municipality for four hundred percent of what you currently write.
You don't say that, you don't.
But, again, the words used on your state statute, and what I, I disagree with the particular words they choose to use to describe, to describe, to explain these things.
It's, it's, it's a little.
But, again, the, and the negative correlation that people make in, in exemption or abatement, I completely agree and understand.
All right, so.
But, again, there is, I promise you, not a financial, less than no financial harm to this.
Okay, so what you're saying, basically, is that on, on the twenty-fifth, on March twenty-fifth, you're gonna see up to the last penny, what the town is gonna be collecting in taxes?
In the year?
All the figures, all the features, no, 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 all the figures are gonna be on the table, and the residents are gonna be able to see what the town is gonna be collecting?
The pilot review itself, yes, but you have to understand that in pilots, the amount of money paid in the future is always estimated.
But you will see the numbers.
They'll be, okay. Oh, one more thing that I've noticed, because I, I'm very observant, believe it or not, I noticed that the township engineer is never there, is it?
Well dressed, that Mr. Fernandez, you're correct, you're correct, he's not here, he's absent.
I was wondering why.
Yeah, well, well dressed, that.
Oh, you will, okay.
Unless there are particular engineering issues to be addressed in the meeting, financially it doesn't make sense that the engineer.
That, that was my question, it was, do they get paid every time they come?
Not really.
Well, no, no, well, obviously.
When they're, when they're present, yes, they are being compensated.
Yes, but, but, yes, they, they.
That would be a good planning program.
Please state your name.
James, James Tobin, Six Francisco Ave. Just the dr, I'm sorry, the geographics on that, did I indicate, I'm sorry, I heard it's gonna start going toward Route twenty-three, it's gonna start where the pet facility was, the vet?
The old location where the vet, where the Little Falls Animal Hospital used to be.
The specific what I'm asking is Jeff, Jeff Brain, that has Little Falls Auto Body, is he impacted, is he gonna lose that location?
No, that is the property, basically where the line is.
That's where the line is, right?
As well as all of the homes, I guess, further south of him, down Woodside Ave, they are not being affected. It is everyone from that imaginary property line further west.
So it's not a conditional link, Jeff's not gonna be impacted, he'll be able to, to stay there.
Correct, but if he was, he would have had to, he left to sell his business or property, the reason was, was.
Oh, the reason I bring that up, is as you know, I lost, in the flood of August eleventh, I got two Corvettes, the sixty-six Corvettes, Jeff was gonna work on that in the spring, so Jeff is still gonna be around.
He'll still be there. He'll be there to work on your Corvettes. The mayor made sure of that, Mr. Tobin. Anyone else?
Number one.
See no else come forward, can I have a motion and a second to close the public?
So moved.
Second? All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.